First, I think I would ask everyone to rise, move your caps, please for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, public comments. This is something that again was added to our agenda. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. So if you want to make a comment on something that's on the agenda, you can do so. If you're here for zoning or plating, you'll have plenty of opportunity to do that at that given time. But this is for other things that are on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. We have no proclamations today, so we'll go to item number two on the agenda. Approval of minutes of the meeting of January twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one, February four, February six, February seven of 2020. And we did receive some of the minutes by email, right, last night? So are those included in this?
They are.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Want to commend Mary for working on a Sunday to get everything caught up, so. All right, we have, under consent items, we have one, under item three A, liquor license refund from Massey Marina.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried three to zero. Okay. Next up is item four on the agenda, which is procurement procedures. We have, under four A is proof of publication. I don't believe we have any of those. So four B is a notice to bidders, bridge replacement on Gun Club Road, project LFM dash B two-one-zero-three dash seven X dash thirty-one. That's a notice to bidders, and that's for a February twenty-fourth bid opening, five-thirty PM. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve the notice to bidders.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the notice to bidders. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. And we have another notice to bidders, four C on the agenda. This is, I'll read this. Notice to bidders, bridge replacement on Hosh Road, project L dash B two-zero-one dash seven-three dash three-one. Notice to bidders, and again, this would be for a February, Monday, February twenty-fourth, five-thirty PM bid letting.
Bid opening.
Bid opening, excuse me.
Four o'clock they're due. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero.
Former government bidder, the time that they're due is very important. Less than, it's exciting when you win when you open it.
The time was our meeting time, and that's what's on here for the opening. So I was, yeah, could catch them. I was covering the opening.
They're both covered.
All right. Next up, four D, and that is a notice to bidders, and that's RCB culvert extensions, pipe culvert replacements, and grading on Lansing Road and Black Hills Road, project L dash C two-zero-one dash seven-three dash three-one. Anthony, have any comment on this?
Sure, I would call this sort of phase one of this project. This would be the infrastructure work on both of those roads, replacing deteriorated metal pipes. There's two big box culverts that need extensions on, actually, three of them. So it's pretty much just trying to get ahead of the paving game with improving these structures.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve.
And I will second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the notice to bidders for the Lansing Road, Black Hills Road project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. All right, next up is four E, and this is county boat motor, and Sheriff Kennedy and Conservation Director Brian Preston's recommendation regarding a new motor for the county boat. We have bids here, so I'd ask Sheriff Kennedy and Director Preston, if they want to come forward and give us some information on this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We sent you out for a new motor, and you came back with a boat.
Well, Brian took the initiative to contact some, or send out some RFPs for the bid motor, or for the boat motor.
So it is just a motor?
Yes.
It is just a motor?
Just a motor.
We're just, when we discussed the option of a new boat, but the boat that this motor goes on, for what we use it for, is still in good enough condition, and we think we can use it for a long period of time. So those are the bids we received. We looked at some different options, maybe getting a larger, larger motor. But once we looked at the function of the boat, we didn't think that that was really necessary. And then there's some different options there. So we chose the low bid, Dubuque Yacht Basin, at eighty-five hundred forty-four dollars and forty-eight, or sixty-five cents. And as we discussed in the work session, the sheriff's office will have room in the bottom line of our budget that we can just take it out of there, so.
What did you, so the hundred-and-fifty horsepower is lower than the other, is lower than the other three, one-hundred-and-fifteen horsepower bids? Did you consider accepting the larger motor? I mean, it's still the low bid, which is, seems like a pretty good price.
It's my opinion that a hundred-and-fifteen horsepower is adequate. A hundred-and-fifty horsepower motor is a heavier motor, and so the boat sits a little different in the water. I think we're fine with a hundred-and-fifteen horse, especially with the conditions of river we've had over the past ten or fifteen years. It's always high. There's not very many opportunities that you can just open it up and get up to.
Sure.
And we don't do a lot of patrol either, where, you know, we'd be chasing other boats or anything like that. This boat is mainly used for recovery efforts, and, you know, if someone gets stranded, you know, what we have is adequate for what we need.
Any towing you would need? Just giving one more shot for a hundred-and-fifty horsepower for cheaper than, cheaper than a hundred-and-fifteen price.
The only time we tow is in an emergency. You know, our insurance does not want us towing boats.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that one-fifty looks like a good deal, but I defer to your, your recommendation, obviously, but, yeah.
Twenty years ago, I said, yeah, one-fifty, but.
Now, now you got kids and all that stuff.
And when you're in charge, when you're in charge of the operation, then it's.
What's, this is a Clark boat, right?
Yep.
And what size is it? How, is it twenty foot?
I think it's twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet.
It's a pretty good sized boat, has a door for.
Those are heavy boats.
Typically at Finley's?
No, this one's at Massey.
Massey, okay.
We have another Clark boat at Finley's for the North Pole.
Yeah, and those are basically lifetime boats.
It's a four-stroke and a lot more environmentally friendly than the two-stroke that we had.
Okay. Last chance on the one-fifty.
Up to Joe.
I think as much, it would be nice, but I think for what we need, I don't think it's necessary.
All right, entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the hundred-and-fifteen motor, purchased from Dubuque Yacht Basin at the low bid.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the low bid for the one-hundred-and-fifteen, one-one-five horsepower, four-stroke motor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carry.
Thank you both.
And there were differences too. If we went to hundred, one-hundred-and-fifty horse, we'd have to change a lot of the connections with a hundred-and-fifteen.
Or it'll go back.
You're ready to add it, so.
Are you guys going to need me for the number eleven, the admin deputy contract?
Do you want? Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, keep moving here. The next item on the agenda is item five, which is public hearings, and we do have the, excuse me, we have a proof of publication, which you have copies in your packet.
A motion to approve the notice of, or the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the proof of publication. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carry. All right, we have, next up is five B, public hearing. Amendment to zoning ordinance. First case would be case ZC number zero-one dash zero-one dash twenty. Kenneth Kalander Estate and Stephen Kalander, A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential. And we will turn, turn this over to our zoning administrator, Tammy Henry.
Looks awesome. Yeah, it looks great, doesn't it?
Blown.
I'm trying to, trying to get it to auto-focus here. Trying to get it to do it. Put it up here and try it. Okay. We're eventually going to have these come just up this way. That's our bowl, okay? Okay, so this is the applicant who requests to be zoned from A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential, three acres to allow the son Kevin Kalander to separate three acres around a home in the buildings that he currently lives in. The property is located one-point-zero-two miles south of the city of Rook'sville along Kalander Road, and is legally described as northeast of the southwest, section thirty-one, T-ninety north, R-one E, Joneson Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Kenneth Kalander. Zoning in the area includes A-one agricultural to the north, east, the south, and the west, A-two agricultural residential to the north, R-one rural residential to the north. The A-two agricultural residential to the north on zoning case number zero-one, zero-five-seventeen, was to allow the home to be separated from the farm ground for state purposes. The R-one rural residential to the north on zoning case number nine-thousand thirty-three of seventy-seven was to allow for a home. There are no special use permits attached to this property. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Rook'sville was notified. Comprehensive plan, chapter nine, agricultural natural resources, page one-thirty-four, objective three-point-one, and chapter eight housing, page one-twenty-two, objective twelve-point-seven may apply to this case. So what you're seeing around that area there is the rezoned area around the buildings. That's their intention. There will be a plat to follow for this estate, and so there are family members here at the speed.
So the intent is to re-zone both those parcels on both sides of the road?
No, so only where the black box is around there, where that little black box is around the buildings. Yeah, sorry about that. There you go. So where the black box area is, is where there will be a plat in area eventually.
Thank you.
And the rest of it, then, of course, with the A-two condition, the rest of that will be undeveloped. You know, we'll keep that same condition, and the family is splitting up the farm in different areas, but they're all needing the agricultural to back it.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Public hearing is open. If there's anyone here to speak on this matter, please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Steve Kalander. My address is six-thirteen Pleasant Street in Sumner, Iowa. And I'm, I'm just here to answer your questions mainly. This is my dad's property that my siblings are buying, and we're splitting it up three ways. And the house then and the buildings will stay with my brother Kevin, who's also here. If you have any questions for him.
Any questions for Steve?
You'll be owning the parcel we outlined here with the buildings?
What's that?
You will be owning that parcel?
I will not be owning any of it.
Okay, okay, that's.
My siblings will be owning all the property.
Okay.
Because I'm too far away.
You're the spokesman for the day, right?
Yes, I'm the executor of the state.
Okay, okay.
Handling the business.
Steve, did we go to junior high and high school together? I thought so, I wasn't sure. You had the nickname the Klondike Cat. You remember those days, right?
I remember those days.
Good to see you again.
See you.
All right. Hearing none, thank you for being here. It's like it's pretty straightforward, so. Any other, anyone else to speak on the public hearing on this matter? Not a motion to close might be in order?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tammy, one thing I did notice, I believe there, this was not a unanimous recommendation. Can you give us?
The Kalander, the Kalander was, the next one we can talk about.
Thank you, okay. It was unanimous.
I will, if there's another discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Okay, was a motion made and seconded to approve the rezoning request? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
I'll make a motion that this amendment be adopted, and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. It is approved. Okay. Next case. It's the case, it's five B two, Gary Valentine and Sam Valentine, the case number ZC number zero-one dash zero-two dash two-zero. And that's A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential.
Yes. The applicants are requesting, excuse me, to rezone from A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential, one-point-eight acres to allow the son Sam Valentine to separate off one-point-eight acres and build a new home so that he continued to assist in the farming operation. The property is located adjacent to the city of Dubuque along Ed Bell Lane, and is legally described as the balance of lot one of Valentine Place number three in the county, except lot A of lot two of the northwest of the southwest, and lot one Valentine Place number three, all in section three, T-eighty-eight north, R-two E, Table Mountain Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Gary Valentine. Zoning in the area includes A-one agricultural to the north, east, the south, and the west, R-one rural residential to the north, R-two single-family residential to the north. The R-one rural residential to the north on zoning case number nine-thousand zero-nine of seventy-three was for a residential subdivision. There are no special use permits attached to this property. There is one previous rezoning case attached to this property on zoning case number three-thirteen of ninety-five, and that was to rezone from A-one agricultural to R-two single-family residential for a residential home for a family member. Fifteen rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Dubuque was notified. Comprehensive plan, chapter nine, agricultural natural resources, page one-thirty-four, objective three-point-one, and chapter eight housing, page one-twenty-two, objective twelve-point-seven may apply to this case. So as you can see at the top there, we've got the section, the one-point-eight acres, following right up along the line, and they're showing you where the son will eventually put a home. And you can't see that on this map, but the parcel goes across the road as well. So all the way down and back up. So as you see that blue line on the other side, that is still part of this parcel. It's a very long, odd-shaped parcel, and with the A-two, the rest of that parcel would be told that it couldn't be developed now. The property right next to it, as you can see, is Gary's as well, and it's already in the city. So Gary understands that if at some point they decide to somehow put more homes out here, they would probably either absorb it into the city or would come back and ask for a request for another rezoning. But at this point, the top piece right above it would be for his mother. That's where his mother, Gary's mother, is living. And that was the rezoning that was done years ago to an R-two. And the reason that we chose the conversation about A-two was because Gary was not interested in coming in and Sam, or in developing all of this, and Sam was interested in her getting into the farm hopefully someday. And Sam currently lives in the home with Gary, which is at the bottom of this parcel, which it's not showing on that map.
I guess the question I had was that this was not a unanimous vote, and it concerns that there was already, there's already more than one home on the forty acres. Can you help me go through that?
Yeah, so Kathy, Kathy believes that if there's a home on that forty already, that we shouldn't be placing another home on there, up at the top of this, in this case at the top. Although we have done that several times, and then by the, the balance of this would be locked up. But that's what, that's what Kathy's concerns are. The other board members have no concern over that because this is, of this, she's considering the split prior to the top as part of a split already, even though that was done back many years ago.
In ninety-five.
Okay, so it was a six to one vote?
It was a six to one, and Kathy just, that's, that was Kathy's concern.
Isn't that generally what we try to do is to have one on forty?
Right, and, and, but we, we have went in and split these, and then taken and locked up another forty with them. In this case, the board members felt, because it is so adjacent to the city already, that they just didn't feel, the other board members didn't feel that it was necessary to do that.
So we're kind of granting an exception right there at the board meeting?
No, no, I don't believe so, because this is the first split out of this forty-acre piece. It was split in the past, and Kathy's saying that because there's a home on here already. She felt if we were going to do anything, you should have split that home off and then locked up the rest. She just doesn't feel that this should have been split and allowed this extra home.
So under her reasoning, then, I guess if, if another family member came forward and said, well, I'd like to have another slice of this.
We're saying no to that.
Even if it's in thirty years?
At this point, we can't, I can't predict what the rules are going to be. In today's rules, if they came even in from a year from now or two years from now, we would tell them no. They would always have the right to come and ask, of course, but the rules that we have in play, that we're using, and the conditional agreement would say no. And if you look, you can see it actually goes even across and then up. This was just kind of a, it's a very weird split parcel. And so as you can see down in the corner there, down to the south, that's the farm buildings, and that's where Gary's at, and his brother is on the other side. Over, as you go off the road, Ronald is off that. So the farm has been slowly split up, and some of the property was, you can see where the red goes up over towards the east side there, that is Gary's property as well, that's already in the city.
And is heavy residential?
It's very heavy residential, and that's why I would speak for most of the board members. That's why they were not concerned with it.
Right, and I also think that, you know, that's appropriate to make, to view it differently and for us to decide whether it's appropriate in this case.
Any other questions for Tammy?
Just the city, does the city Dubuque have to sign off on this?
No, they're notified.
Notified.
They're notified, they're aware of it, and it, you know, if they had a concern, they would contact us. But generally, they don't really contact us. But because they're within the two miles, they're always notified.
Right, what about the plat? The plat they don't have to approve either?
They'll have to go through the plating process, they'll have to go through the city when they come to the plat portion of this.
So the city will have to approve the plat?
The city will have to approve the plat.
So, yeah, so, so it's great to zone, but if you're trying to do separate plating along with that process, the city would have to be approved. Do you know what their position is? Would this be platted off separately? Is that the intent?
This will be platted off, it will be the one-point-eight acres, and I have not heard any comments from anybody in the city that they would have concern about it being platted off. I don't believe they're going to have concern about it because it is adjacent to the city and at some point could be absorbed in there.
And this might be a question for the Valentines if they've already had to sign a pre-annexation agreement. If not, that probably will be coming from the city as a, as a term of approving the plat, that you'll be waiving your rights to remain in the county.
We'll have the chance to ask Mr. Valentine during his, during the public hearing. When we get to that.
That was all my questions. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, at this time, public hearing is open, and anyone who is here to speak on this matter, please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. Good morning, Gary.
Four-two-nine at Bell Lane. My son says he's ready to build a home, and I would like to keep him close to, on the farm so he can help me. I'm getting old enough to where it's going to be time to slow down a little bit. We both work full-time, so trying to work that farm work in. It's a matter of when somebody has time. We have talked to Bezing as far as the preliminary idea of the lot. That's why that size is there. There is a Black Hills pipeline going to go through there. We've worked with them, got their approval on it. That's still kind of in the process, I guess, but we have worked with them. The reason that thing is so split up is partly due to that southwest arterial, that red, the red portion down toward the bottom, that's the arterial going through there. That's why that parcel is split up there. As far as the east side of Ed Bell Lane, there's forty-eight acres that is in the city. Zoned R-three, I believe it's zoned R-three. I did that at the time. Timberhurst subdivision wanted an access to North Cascade Road, so I traded them some ground. I didn't trade at the time, but later on, eventually, I was able to buy between six and seven acres of their farm ground, add to my ground, and gave them an access out to North Cascade Road. So part of that, part of that reason is, or that's part of the reason why it is split like that. My mom and dad built a house where my mother still lives, at the end of Ed Bell Lane on the, on the west side there. I believe that was back in the late eighties. So they split that off at the time. I guess we're just looking to keep the son on the farm, and hopefully that works for us. So I can answer any of those questions, if I can answer them, that you've got about, about this splits and stuff like that.
Gary, I just, is there, is it your intention to build more homes on this?
Not now, that is not my intention. I had no intention of doing that until he said he's coming, or he's ready to build a home. I thought of, I mean, it is pasture ground, I'm not taking any, any good crop ground. I like to see the crop ground kept as much as we can, you know, I'm an old-school farmer. I do have to realize that, yeah, Timberhurst is alongside of me, and I see that we used to farm all that ground. I see homes coming, I'm, I have no intention of building homes. I want to farm for a while. I just want these guys to leave me alone for a while. I've got, North Cascade Road is going to get rebuilt this summer. I needed to sell some ground for that, with that pipeline going through, and then after dealing with that arterial, yeah, I just need a breather for a while. But this just seemed to come up, but I guess you work with progress, you know?
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Valentine?
Are you aware of the pre-annexation agreement that the city makes many residents sign when, in order to get approval on plats and other developments?
I do have a pre-annexation agreement on, on the red part.
Okay.
We've got sewer extensions and water main extensions agreements. I, I'm not aware of everything, but yeah, like I said, we do have a pre-annexation agreement on the forty-eight acres. The reason that we, I think it's hundred and twenty-five feet east of Ed Bell Lane where the county and, and city meet. The reason we did that, my mother was concerned about, and I guess I was concerned too. Where do you put that dividing line and who takes care of Ed Bell Lane? It was just simpler at the time, or we thought it was, to keep Ed Bell Lane in the county. And the city was okay with, and the county was okay with, with putting that line there.
No other questions? Any other questions? Thank you, Gary.
And I will add, when the plat comes through, the mother's lot, her lot is just under an acre. So when they plat this with Bezing, their intent is to make sure that's an acre lot. Because she has a twenty-foot easement for a sewer now onto this other parcel that we're talking about. So we're going to, when the time comes, if it's approved, that's the intent is to correct that future problem as well.
All right, we're still in public hearing, is there anyone else to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we're in tandem motion to close the public.
To close the public hearing?
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the rezoning. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three zero.
And my final motion is that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map. And that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. It is approved. Tammy, do you need signatures today or? No plats, just, okay, we're good, okay. Take care. Thanks for being here. We have under five C a notice of public hearing. And that would be for the Dubuque County, let's see. Five C, notice of public hearing, amendment to the FY twenty, secondary roads, five-year construction program. And FY twenty-one, secondary roads, five-year construction program. Anthony, you have any comment on this? This is a notice of public hearing.
Correct, yes.
And that would be February twenty-fourth at five thirty P M.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the notice of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have one other item before we move. I might want to get Tammy in here.
Better hurry. On the elevator.
Oh, did she leave? I, I thought I saw her.
She was on her way out, but she might be talking to some of the citizens. She's out there. Simmons back into the chamber.
This is, the chair is, as, as chair, I'm asking. We had a passing of one of our zoning board members, Leo Ganson. Faithful member of the zoning board, died totally unexpectedly. So with the approval of our, with the other supervisors, I would ask that we would take a moment of silence in honor of Leo Ganson. Thank you.
Thank you.
May he rest in peace.
Thank you for doing that. We, we are going to, as the board meets next month, we'll be doing a card and things and sending that again to his family as well.
All right, thank you, all right.
Thank you, Tammy.
Out of necessity, I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave, for.
Six on the agenda, approval of plats, we have none. We'll go to item seven, action items. First up is seven A, a resolution, appointment of deputies, assistants and clerks.
Don, any comment on all these secondary roads, any question, Sheriff?
These are all due to retirements and resignations, so there's no additional FTEs for this, so I would recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointments of deputies, assistants and clerks. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. All right, next up is item seven B. We have a duplicate warrant.
You did have a question on this, if you know or.
Kathy Lowenberg and it's thirty-five dollar check and.
We get these every now and then.
Mileage check.
We get these every now and then, I mean, do we have to have these in our, our main session? Can we just sign these like other claims with a, with a note on it saying, hey, this is a duplicate claim from? Agreed, and we do approve a bunch of stuff on the board and we sign those. Can we, can we just include this in our signing stack versus having it come to the board supervisors? Because it seems so small, if you can look into it.
Do you want Denise in here now?
No, no, I, I think if you can just research, I mean, they're, they're not very often, but probably every two months, you get a duplicate check for thirty bucks. Nobody, nobody forgets to cash the big ones, you ever notice that?
But I agree, it's been approved once before somewhere.
Right, you can streamline the process, so we still approve it, but not, doesn't have to necessarily hit our official agenda. That said, I will make a motion to approve this duplicate warrant and get a new check.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the duplicate warrant, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. We have a, in seven C, we have a resolution approving letter regarding refugee settlement. We have the resolution attached, the letter is in the packet. It's modeled after the governor's letter, matter of fact, I think it's identical.
I know we have R R Stewart here, I'm not sure if she was here to, to speak related to this, but if the chair would, would recognize her and if she would make a comment.
Would you like to comment?
And I, I know you had specific requests for us in terms of who we were notifying. And I just want to make sure we're following through with what you expect.
Yes, R R Stewart, Chair Dubuque for Refugee Children. So with this letter, I know that after you had passed the letter, that Sarah, the woman from the Catherine McCauley Center who came to the work session two weeks ago, you can, you can of course send it directly to the State Department yourself. But she's been asking every county that approves the letter to also make sure a copy of the letter either gets scanned and emailed to her, or you could send it to her in the mail. And I, and I wanted a copy too. But that was just the request, just so we have it for our records, just because we're trying to keep track of what counties have agreed to in Iowa, this request.
It'll be, it's public record now.
And, and do you know by any chance of the, generally how many counties have adopted this resolution? Are you familiar with that?
Well, I, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't know. I do know that within northeast Iowa, I know the Catherine McCauley Center has worked with Blackhawk County, Luiza, Johnson County I know has done it. And I, I think, I'm sorry, there's one more, but the names not.
I think Lynn County may.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, Lynn County did it too. And then there is a fifth, there is a fifth county not counting Dubuque. And I can't remember what the fifth county would be. But basically, I've only been keeping track of the ones in northeast Iowa. But there is a website that I think was in one of the emails I sent you, which is as the Secretary of State relieves, receives these letters, they're all posted publicly on the, on a federal government website connected to the Secretary of State. So you can also go there and see who all has submitted letters. I know there's a little bit of a delay though, because for example, Blackhawk did the letter in December. And last time I checked the website, they still weren't up there. So for whatever reason, it might take two, three months for the Secretary of State to actually post the letters. But I do know, once they receive them, they do eventually post them on that website where they're listing all the consent letters. So you can search by state and then by county.
Before you walk away from the podium, I want to congratulate you. It's a little off topic, but I believe you were the recipient of a hundred-plus Women Who Care, Dubuque for Refugee Children.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you very much, yes. So, yeah, for those of you who don't know, one hundred-plus Women Who Care is a group that meets every quarter and they choose a local charity and every member of the group writes a hundred-dollar check to that charity. And so at last week's meeting, Dubuque for Refugee Children made a presentation and we got chosen. So we'll be getting about eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars from, yeah. Once, once all those women write out their checks and then there's a local foundation that does a matching grant of about five thousand. So that'll go a long way towards the medical and legal and dental expenses that we cover.
And as part of this, when this was first brought to my attention, so I went out and met with the sisters and other members of the Crossing Borders Group and had other meetings, because I wanted to make sure I understood, you know, the difference between refugees and asylum seekers and, and all that. And so what I was, what I've learned was that refugees are legal in the United States. They're pre-approved before they enter the country. They're given approval before they enter our borders, is that correct?
Right, exactly. So refugee and asylee are used pretty interchangeably, but the main difference is what you just said. So a refugee is someone who applies for refuge before they come to the U S. Asylum is someone who applies once they reach the border or otherwise in U S soil.
Correct, but in this case, this, this is pertaining to refugees.
Yes, exactly. So these are people who apply to come to the U S before they ever leave their home country.
And they're pre-approved.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Exactly, they go through a background process. And then the State Department has about ten refugee resettlement agencies it works with. And the state of Iowa actually is its own refugee resettlement agency. So if someone's assigned to the state of Iowa, and then the state of Iowa chooses which of the refugee resettlement agencies within Iowa will actually do the work of doing that. So as we mentioned, Catherine, the Catherine McCauley Center is the one that does refugee resettlement for northeast Iowa. But the Secretary of State is who initially decides what state they're going to. And then that state decides which refugee resettlement agency within the state will take care of settling them. And then, as you heard at the work session, if the refugee has family or friends in a particular county, they might say, you know, my cousin lives in Dubuque or my sister lives in Lynn County, could I go to that county? And that's why the Catherine McCauley Center is asking for this permission so that they can settle people in a specific county if they ask for that. If they don't have a specific county they're asking for, then, then the refugee resettlement agency just makes the decision about what county to settle them in.
Thank you. And this letter, again, it mirrors a letter that we received or that was put out by Governor Reynolds. And Governor Reynolds' letter opened the door for counties to send a similar letter.
Right, exactly. So first, the governor of the state has to consent. Again, mirroring the actual resettlement process, first you're assigned to a state. And then once the state has consented, then the local county that's associated with the refugee resettlement agency has to consent. And if you did go to the Secretary of State's website and looked at the letters, almost all of them have this language or very similar language, because this is the language that the Secretary of State asked for. So the letters all use this language, because that's just, you know, straightforward, do you consent to this request?
And the other discussion we had when we had our work session is, it has been a while since Dubuque County has actually settled any refugees. I think they said it's been almost ten years, because right now it's not a place where refugees are congregating, that they have family or, or friends. But this would, this is a welcoming gesture. And it was made possible by the governor sending out a similar letter.
Right, yes. As you mentioned, there haven't been refugees settled in Dubuque for about ten years. Some of that has to do with, particularly under the Trump administration, the U S government has reduced the number of refugees it's been accepting. It's actually at an all-time low right now, so there's been less refugees coming. We do however have people seeking asylum in Dubuque County. Again, those are the people who apply after they get to the U S. And again, asylum and refugees are different, and this letter is specifically, would specifically apply to someone speaking refugee status. It does at least send the message to those people who are seeking asylum that Dubuque County is a welcoming place to them, even though from a legal standpoint, this letter doesn't apply to them.
Right, this letter applies strictly to refugee settlement.
Yes.
And with that, I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Thank you. All right, next up is Resolution seven D, approving the contract for the courthouse and old jail fire alarm replacements. Chris Soder, do you want to come forward? So you're at a microphone? All right. You want to give us kind of an overview for the public, this is a public meeting?
Sure, over the last five years, we've had problems with our fire alarm system here in the courthouse. It's outdated and unsupportable. And it's the same thing with the old jail. The company that put the one in at the old jail does not exist anymore. And we're just holding it together with bailing wire and chewing gum right now. This will update everything to meet current code, tie in both buildings together. It'll have full mass notification capabilities. So if there's a smoke detected or a fire is located, it will actually tell you that there's smoke detected in the boardroom or something to that effect. So you know what floor it is and what general location it is. And it also gives us the option of being able to utilize the mass notification system for other, other things.
All right, and the amount of this, it looks like it's not to exceed two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
And was Westfall the only bid?
Yeah, it was. The other, I had multiple other contractors on site, including Tyco, Simplex, Johnson, whatever, it's Johnson Controls, I guess now. And they did not put out a bid, so. And the fire alarm systems that were recommended or being, planned to be installed by Westfall are the same thing we put out at the West Campus. So we're standardized, getting more standardized with our fire alarm equipment too.
Any questions, other questions on the resolution?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution, there's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
Thank you. Chris, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Very welcome.
Next up is seven E, resolution to approve the F H W A taper match authorization letter for the build grant. We had a work session to discuss this prior to this meeting, at a public work session. Anthony, do you have any, anything to add or any recommendation?
Yeah, basically in a nutshell, this kind of gives the board's sort of authorization to F H W A to, or I guess request for authorization to start on the preliminary engineering phase of this project. And that, that part is being funded through our swap, swap funding. So for us to begin anything before the base of the. So for us to begin anything before the base of the bill grant begins, we have to have authorization from Federal Highway. And this is the format letter that they want to see. So that's, that's about it.
Make a motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. We have Resolution 7F, resolution to approve the final progress voucher for the bridge replacement project on Old Worthington Road South. And again, Anthony, any input on this?
This will be the final voucher to release any retainage that's been withheld on the project. So this will be closing out the project.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. Okay. We have 7G, we have a resolution to approve the temporary delayed travel restrictions of county roads on July 12, 2020, for the annual Iowa's Ride Bicycle Tour. This is 7G. This is a new ride, this is the, it was going to run at the same time as RagBri, but they...
Think there's a week or two apart?
Yeah, I think there's a week or two difference. I think there was a reason they, they didn't stay at the same time as RagBri. But anyway, so this is a special event permit application, correct?
Yes.
Right.
The only issue that I would, I would say that I've seen on this map here, and I've relayed that to the, the director of this event, would be their optional loop that they're talking about for the Field of Dreams. You know, so we'll have some construction taking place on Dyersville East Road this year. And there are some culvert replacements that will happen on that, on that road. So the road may be closed at certain portions of the, of the year. So that may affect their optional loop there, but I've let them know that.
Did you communicate that in writing?
Yes.
Thank you. I saw that, too. I thought that's, they're, they're certainly circling right around where we're going to be doing major work.
That may depend on weather and other issues.
Right. But their primary route is, is, is all good. We're not doing anything on those, those roads.
Do you know, is that where they're actually assembling? Is that the, the Armory, the Army Reserve spot? Is that actually where they're starting? Or is that just our route? Do you know where they're starting, I guess?
I'm not totally sure where they're starting, to be honest.
I thought it was the fairgrounds.
But this ride is a statewide, from river to river, similar to RagBri. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I assume. So I assume they aren't starting right there at that, that intersection. But I, I'm just asking question. Yes, they're going, yeah.
It's the week before RagBri.
It looks like it's the fairgrounds.
I think it's the fairgrounds. I think that it's being done late enough that all the logistics don't work. This is just, from having family and friends who ride the rides, that, that is unique. But I don't know that they're dipping their tires.
Okay. What's your pleasure on the resolution?
Make a motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. Okay. 7H, it's a resolution approving plans and specifications for the bridge replacement on Gun Club Road, Anthony, now, if you have any particular comments on this resolution?
This is one of our, you know, major collector highways with a load embargoed bridge. Substructure does not look the greatest, so it's a very good one to get rid of. It's replacing the existing bridge with a hundred-and-fifty-foot by thirty-foot concrete slab bridge. It'd be scheduled for a February 24 letting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in 7H. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. 7I, we have a resolution to approve plans and specifications for the bridge replacement on Hosh Road, Project L-B2-01-73-31.
This would be one of our recurring flood repair bridges. Seems like when the sky thinks about raining, it floods. It's, it's just a, just a nasty little short timber bridge that, it's a ten-ton embargoed bridge. In front of the buttments always seem to wash out. So we'll, we'll be replacing this with a seventy-foot by thirty-foot concrete slab bridge. Again, February 24 letting.
Okay.
What is the cost for that, Anthony?
I'm sorry, what was it?
What's the cost?
The estimate on this one would be, I think, about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
And you believe that's related to consistent flooding?
This one, for sure. It's undersized. There's a big scour hole downstream of this bridge, and the, the approach to the north side of the bridge just routinely blows out. So it's, it's severely undersized.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution in 7I, Bridge Replacement on Hosh Road. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. Item 7J, resolution to approve plans and specifications for the RCB culvert extensions, pipe culvert replacements, and grading on Lansing Road and Black Hills Road, Now, go back to Anthony on this? We had a work session on this earlier, and just for the public's knowledge, could we just get a thumbnail sketch on this?
Yeah, I would say this is what, what I call the Phase One of this Black Hills and Lansing Road project. This would be taking care of the existing infrastructure out there, as far as pipe culverts and box culverts. It'd be a replacement of quite a few smaller pipes, and also extensions on existing box culverts out there, and doing some widening and regrading around those, those culverts in preparation for the Phase Two paving, paving plans. And I will probably have that set of plans ready for the next board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. All right. Number eight, Communications, 8A, proof of publication zoning cases. We have none. Go to 8B, resignation from the Dubuque County Civil Service Commission.
So, receive and file.
Okay.
Any additional comment? Okay. I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Okay. Motion made to receive and file, the communication in 8B. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. Then we have 8C, the Conservation Department Annual Report. We have Brian Preston here with us.
Good timing, front page of the TH today.
Yeah. Any questions or comments for Brian? Do you want Brian to go through this?
I, I had a chance to review this at the Conservation Board and very approve of, you know, very proud of the report, but certainly if you want to go on any further, we're open to that. We have time.
I think the report's dated July 1st of 2018 to June 30th of 2019. So I think that helps folks know it's the fiscal year 19 report. Doesn't include the projects that obviously you're working on now, and even some of the things you're looking at for fiscal year 21. I'm, was very happy to see the report. I thought it was well-done. It's very detailed, Brian, in hitting the parks and talking about each of our land areas. You know, what you're working on, what, what you've done, what the accomplishments have been, and then what the future needs are. And then I was looking at that to, you know, look at your, your future requests and to see how that all aligns. So I don't need to have Brian go through that unless there's purpose for the board to do that.
Okay. Just a question, if you had any projects you wanted to highlight or, or comment on that you were extra proud with? Okay. I'm with you.
Very hard for me to hear you, Brian. Let Mary turn on the...
Sorry, I include photos of all the staff and our seasonal employees, but they're really the key to what we're able to accomplish every year. I mean, without them, given a hundred percent all the time, that we wouldn't be in the position we're in. So, very proud of our staff and how hard they work. And this was not as timely as usual. Apologize for getting the annual report out so late, but next year it will be. It'll end up really tight after the fiscal year ends.
A question that I might have, when, in your presentation, you talked about the Urban Youth Corps, and that there's no grant for that anymore. I did not understand that you asked for any funding for that program.
So it, it currently is in our budget, the Urban Youth Corps. We would, and I asked Stella after the meeting if I was clear, and you understood that, but there is no grant program available anymore. It is programmed in our budget for those wages. We would like to continue on with that trail program, run it in the same manner, but we would lose eight thousand dollars revenue without that grant being available. So it would be an eight thousand dollars, basically, increase to our tax.
But you're intending to keep the program going?
Yeah, if, if you approve our budget. But we, with that Urban Youth Corps program, we had ran, we had to provide eight hours of education to those participants every week. We would probably limit that to four hours per week, have a half-day work, and then a half-day educational program, instead of that eight-hour.
Okay. I think we'd be looking for a motion to receive and file the report.
Make a motion to receive and file the Conservation Annual Report.
And I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. Thanks, Brian. Next up, on item nine, approval of appointments. 9B, open vacancies, that's a list of open vacancies on our boards and commissions.
I did talk to one citizen who was a parent advocate for the Mental Health Stakeholder Committee. So if we see something come in, can you just let me know? You know, they're, they're just swamped by time. When you're the parent of someone who is, has a disability, it's hard to carve out any more time to be part of. And that's what the openings primarily are in that committee, is we're looking for representatives of family, parent advocacy.
Okay. We have, under, item nine, under, excuse me, in 10, we go to 10, we have Conservation Aid. This is a personnel requisition. Number 10 on the agenda, 10A, Conservation Aid, nine positions. Go to Dawn Sherman and, I guess, Brian Preston for any input on this?
This is to get Brian's seasonal crew up and running before the, really, the start of the season. And this one is for nine positions. The next one, we'll need to clarify, it's for two positions as well.
Okay.
Before we comment on that, if I, if I could make a comment, one of the things that is probably important in the report to point out, and wasn't hit on your article this morning, is the revenue. So Conservation, last fiscal year, brought in four, five-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars of revenue in various fees and grants that we acquired. And so while there are always expenditures, they're one of the few departments that does generate revenue as well. They'll help offset some of those costs. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right. What's your pleasure on the Conservation Aid positions?
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero. All right. Now we have 10B, under personnel requisitions, grounds maintenance for Conservation.
And we just need to make a clarification. This is for two positions. So who is asking to hire two grounds maintenance workers?
Are they both replacements?
So, yeah, these are positions that are longer-term seasonal. We kind of geared it towards more retired people that would be interested. So they're only twenty-four hours a week. It worked out extremely, extremely well last year. We're hopeful to fill those positions. They are mainly mowing our positions, so they mow grass.
But they're not new positions, and they are budgeted for two.
Yep.
We started this maybe three years ago?
No, just last year.
Just last year, okay. So for some reason, I thought it'd been going on for a couple of years here. You know, I think the real, the focus was try to get our park rangers and some of our higher-employed professionals in conservation off mowers, and to get a wage rate and potentially a seasonal type person on those mowers, so that the park rangers could provide more value in bigger projects and, and obviously, working with the public. Fair assessment?
Hundred percent correct.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the two positions for grounds maintenance for Conservation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. 10C, we have internship for the IT department. We have our IT Director, Nathan Gilmore, here, as well as our Human Resources Manager, Dawn Sherman. Do we have any particular input on this?
Oh, Jen is graduating in May. She took another internship. It's more geared towards her degree. We wish her well. She was a fantastic asset and intern. So I'd like to try to find a replacement still for the spring, if it's possible.
Who do you typically go to to fill those? What?
Lawrence College.
Okay.
I have a good working relationship with Jennifer Weber there, as far as getting her to do a filter before she sends the best to me.
I've, I've worked with her as well. She does a wonderful job. I would encourage you to send the opportunity to all the major colleges, Lawrence, Clark, and UD, potentially NICC as well.
Probably maybe for the fall, when I reset things, or, well, let me get contact. Do you have a contact at NICC?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, good. Chris Entinger, but I can give you that contact.
Sounds great.
Runs the internship programs.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just want to make a comment. Nathan's department does a fabulous job in their internship program. I think you've probably seen Jen and Jabari through here. He gives them very meaningful, valuable work experience opportunities. So I do want to point that out, and would encourage this replacement.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the internship for the IT department. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nathan. 10D, permanent part-time custodian for facilities maintenance. This would be, involve Chris Soder, our facilities maintenance superintendent, and Dawn Sherman, our HR manager. And this is replacing one of our valued folks who moved on. I do have a comment on this. I, I, my understanding is Ted was offered a full-time position with a school district. And I guess I've asked that we, you know, we're, we had, I think... And, uh, I, I guess I've asked that we, you know, we're, we're, we had, I think somebody who was good employee and trustworthy. And, uh, I asked him if he would have left if he was full-time and he said, no, he would have stayed. So I think this is the time we should be revisiting whether we have enough work, um, to create full-time positions. Right now we have two part-time in the courthouse. We have lots of other opportunities where you could fill in, uh, and make a full-time position. I mean, I, I leave that to you all, but, uh, when s- you know, somebody leaves like this, it gets your attention. So I don't know how my counterparts feel about this, but, uh, um, you know, I'm sure we'll get an able replacement. But, uh, if we didn't have the work, I would probably not be saying this. But I am aware that we have work in other departments that we are outsourcing and, uh, so.
Well, I was surprised that we, when you kind of made the comment that we had around a hundred part-time people. Um, I didn't think it would be that high. Um, thought it'd be maybe half that. And I knew a lot of them were at Sunny Crest as well. If the board would be in shit, I would be liking to see maybe a report of who those part-time employees are and in what division. You know, certainly and, and assume right now everyone in part-time receives no benefits as far as.
That is correct. They don't receive health insurance. They do have holiday.
Holiday pay, but, but no health or dental benefits.
That is correct.
And they do qualify for ITers.
That is correct also.
Okay, and so there would be additional costs related to them being on their benefit plan, um, as required by, by law, uh, if they would go full-time. But I would be interested in, to know what those costs are and, uh, what is the workload in, in various departments? Sunny Crest, we routinely just hire and hire and hire. That is just a churning mill and that cannot be good for operations.
I, I agree. I think Chris Kirsch does a wonderful job managing in spite of the turnover and the relatively low wages on some of those positions that tend to be turned over, uh, time after time. But these positions, I think we have some pretty good, we've had some pretty good long-term part-time folks. But, um, you know, we, when you lose people, it, it gets your attention, so.
What is the current pay for this position? I don't see it listed here. Doesn't appear there's a problem with the pay itself because you're fi- you think you're gonna find somebody?
This is a union position, so it's negotiated with the union.
But typically in a part-time position, you're gonna end up hiring somebody off the street, right?
Every once in a while. And there's been a few, there's been once or twice the, between Sunny Crest and here that I've brought somebody from in-house in.
But that would, the Sunny Crest Union though, that would be a county outside the bargaining unit. It's unlikely that somebody in the bargaining unit right now, which is predominantly full-time, is gonna bid this part-time position. Unless maybe they're looking to reduce their hours prior to retirement or something like that. But most likely this will be an off-the-street hire or a transfer in from another county department.
Yeah.
And, and neither of that, none of that's bad.
No.
Right? I mean, we're, you know, not asking this position to manage I T.
No.
So, and the, the pay we think is what?
The, the starting wage is, uh, fifteen ninety-nine and the maximum is eighteen fifty, eighteen fifty-eight.
Okay, so maybe if we did, um, advertise this up at Sunny Crest, a part-time person from Sunny Crest, especially a female, could make a whole lot more money doing this job than what she's doing up there. Maybe the hours don't align for what people need either.
Yeah, most, uh, starting time here is right around between four and four-thirty. And then they run, you know, four sixes and a five. And the schedule is very, very fluid for them. A lot of times, you know, because they have other family obligations and things. So for me, it's, as long as I get the hours in and everything looks good, which it has been, it's been working out very, very well for us.
Right, thank you. Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve, open for discussion, in discussion. Chris, I guess I would like you to take a look at, um, get with Dawn and take a look at these positions and maybe, um, come, you know, have a, a, a work session. Supervisor Wickham has requested a list of part-time staff throughout the county. Um, you know, maybe there's some areas where we can link up, uh, some part-time positions to make full-time positions. If, you know, if it's feasible and, and that would, uh, perhaps help in the area of turnover. Because it's not, I mean, it costs money for us to, uh, bring in new hires and train them and all that, so. All right, any other discussion?
Do you have frequent turnover in this position, Chris?
Um, no, not really. It's, it's mainly because of the pay scale, um, is, it's a very good number as well as, uh, um, the hours. And the fact that they, you know, currently right now, the only place they go outside of the courthouse is over to the elections annex. And that's once a week, um, off elections, when during elections, it's usually three nights a week they're over there. Um, there are, there would be significant benefits, um, by going to some, another full-time position. I'd be able to, uh, eliminate some of the contracts and some of the, uh, the headaches of those contact, contracts have created over the years. Most of them are just, they have an incredibly high rate of turnover. I've gone through, I'm on my s- fourth pair of staff through Dubuque Janitorial working out at the West Campus. So it gives you an idea. And then the, the, the learning curve is constant. You know, trying to teach them just how to make sure that they know how to, to put the toilet paper in right and use the right, you know, and, and put the paper towels in right. And it, it becomes a nightmare after a while.
So would a person, first of all, I want to know, in, in discussion, are we anticipating that we're holding up this position until we do these things, work session? Um, looking at all the part-time people?
No, I would support this, this, uh, personnel requisition on its own. Um, and then kind of longer term, over the next three to six months, having information related to part-time and, uh, just having that conversation to, hey, we're all fine with our part-time, this is, leave it alone. Or potentially we, we decide to make modifications.
I, I do want to point out my knowledge of the collective bargaining agreement, agreements. There may be, if we hire this person as part-time, then they may have, uh, they may be first in line in the bidding process within the bargaining unit if they hold that position. Correct me if I'm mistaken. So, um, just, just FYI. And, and that's not a bad thing necessarily. I'm just pointing that out. So is that correct?
We've had, um, the last full-time position, custodial position I had, uh, come open after Jerry Conson had retired. Um, um, Ron from the Treasurer's Office took that position.
Right.
Took a pay cut and stuff, but he needed to get out of the Treasurer's Office.
Okay.
But in most cases, um, when I have these part-time ones, unless somebody somewhere comes up that's, you know, in-house county someplace, yeah, I usually end up going outsourcing them. But yeah, if this goes to a full-time position, unless somebody senior in the union wants that position from another department, they would have first pick otherwise.
But didn't Tom Knoll go from part-time to full-time as a custodian?
Yes, he did after, uh, Rich retired.
Right. So, I mean, in that case, it, he was doing the job, so that makes sense. But I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. Well, and the fact that there's zero learning curve at that point.
Right, yeah.
That also helps tremendously.
And I think that's when Ted came on board.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carry three to zero. Thank you. All right, uh, item eleven is, uh, tabled and pending items. Uh, I have, uh, this was tabled last meeting. It's a resolution approving the F Y twenty collective bargaining agreement between Teamsters Local One Twenty, representing the Sheriff's Department, uh, Administrative Deputy Union and Dubuque County. This was basically, this was the one that went to arbitration and was presented, the contract itself was presented for our approval.
That is correct.
And that is already in effect as of July first of twenty nineteen.
That is correct. The, the five percent wage increases, well, I guess going back, this union is, um, covers sixteen employees. Um, they're the administrative deputies over at the Sheriff's Department. Um, in their contract, each one of those positions, um, the wage is tied to the sheriffs. It's a percentage of the sheriffs. So the five percent wage increase was not negotiated during, um, with the union. That is something that, based on the comp board recommendations and the Board of Supervisors approval. So they did receive a five percent wage increase July one. Um, when we did go to arbitration, the arbitrator sided, um, with the county on the increase of the employee share of the health insurance. Um, so that will go, that did go up to six percent of the total cost for that.
And will their pay in this next fiscal year be set by, um, whatever our final decision is?
That is correct. You decide that.
Right. They're tied to the i- percent increase of the sheriff.
That is correct.
And you said it was sixteen. And that includes, my understanding is it includes Chief Deputy Reniker. Uh, it also includes the, uh,
The captains.
The ma- the, uh, maintenance and I- and I T managers over at the, uh, Law Enforcement Center as well as the captains. I don't know about sergeants. I think they might be included as well.
Eighty percent of the sheriff's base pay.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Chief Deputy Reniker is eighty-five percent.
That's correct.
Right, so. All right, um, what's your pleasure on this collective bargaining?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carry three to zero. Okay, at this time, we have, uh, item twelve, public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are of concern to that person, which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address, make your comments. However, no formal action on your comments may be taken at this time because of the notice requirements. Need none?
Make a motion to recess.
Motion to recess, there's second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.